Welcome to the Monday, August 27th, meeting of the Danville City Commission. The hour is 5:31, and I believe we have a quorum here, so I will call us all to order. I'll ask that we be led in a moment of prayer by Commissioner Kevin Cottle. Commissioner?
Thank you. Lord of all, once again, we thank you for allowing us to gather here in freedom. It's a right and a privilege that many do not enjoy. We would ask that you be with those who help maintain those rights and freedoms, who find themselves in harm's way, and we ask that you be with our first responders here locally. Tonight, we would ask that you be with us as we face the decisions of our city and to remember that we are all neighbors. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. We have with us tonight Brandon Williams, a junior from Boyle County, who is here to earn a merit badge on, what, public service or governance or something like that, but anyway...
He has citizenship in the community.
What?
Citizenship.
Citizenship. Come on up here, citizenship, and show us how you're engaged in the planet of the living.
You'll have to explain that to the mayor, he doesn't...
I don't know.
You are a citizen there, right? Attention, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, don't run off. Don't run off. Tell us, yeah, do that again. Tell us, tell us, how many years you've been in scouting?
This is my third year, third or fourth year. I started whenever I came into high school, because I had missed the first two years I knew about it in my church.
Okay. And it's a little early, but after high school, what's the plans, if you have any?
So, I'm planning on going to BCTC for two or three light-years of work and do some of my core classes, where I can then transfer, credit transfer over to UK, and then get my degree in some sort of computer science there.
Excellent, excellent. And what's the best thing you've gotten out of scouting thus far, other than coming up here?
Yeah, this is the best part, by far. Favorite trip, favorite trip. I have a lot of great leaders, a lot of great members of the community, and I've learned a lot from all the experiences that they've had. My favorite being money owners.
Excellent. Well, thank you for joining us, we appreciate that, wish you the very best of luck.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Atkins has something for you to remind you of your stellar time here.
Thank you, sir.
So, what's the scouting model?
There you go, all right.
The commission, you have had before you for a number of days here, agenda, I assume it needs everyone's approval, so we'll move on. We're in the section of the meeting tonight, and I'll hear the public, this is the public's opportunity to address anything that is on tonight's agenda. You're given a three-minute time window to do that. There will be an opportunity later on in the meeting, after the main business section, to address the commission, the staff, for, again, three minutes, or anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So, that said, floor is open, microphone. I'm ready.
I'll just be one minute. Last week, we had a couple visit us, they knew Kentucky, they knew Bourbon, and Steve Powell, and so we wanted to impress them, and we took them to the likely suspects, Shaker Village, Makers, Steve Powell's workshop, Center, the library, but then we took them to the Dollhouse Museum. And these are two neat, educated, sophisticated people. What they raved about, because they had no idea, is we had something like the Dollhouse Museum. And I know that's on the agenda, so that's why I'm talking now. Anyway, I just want to tell you how impressive it is for people who don't really know what they're looking for, and you pop them in there, and their eyes pop out of their head, and this is, this is a tough guy. Museum, Dollhouse museums? No. I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Oh, Dr. Mount, sorry.
My name is Lori Kagan-Moore, and I'd like to thank the mayor, the commissioners, and the city staff for hearing me today. Before I make my comments, I'd like to skip briefly to the punchline. The punchline is that I'm very pleased and grateful for the Dollhouse Museum signs Mr. Carmen has included on the north end of Danville. However, we are not represented at all on the west side or the south side, and I'm requesting we be included on one sign there. Since we have all been concerned about sign clutter, I want to emphasize that I am talking about one listing on one sign. I have taken more of all of your time over signage than I would have liked. However, in the larger scheme, I think the museum asks very little and gives back a great deal. We never ask for money, or banners, or grants. We pay property taxes and have been business members of both the Heart of Danville and the Chamber of Commerce for 12 years. The only thing we have asked for is signage. The museum brings in over 4,000 tourists a year. These visitors, who must drive here and expect to pay admission, are mostly in income brackets that can also afford to eat out, shop, and when needed, stay overnight. We get feedback from restaurants and hotels that they frequently serve patrons we have brought to Danville. The museum is Danville's number-one attraction on TripAdvisor and Yelp. We are one of only six Dollhouse and Miniatures museums in the nation. We have been designated one of Kentucky's top 51 must-see places by the Kentucky State Tourism Cabinet, and have been recognized and touted in the regional and national media. The museum is also one of Danville's only attractions that is open five days a week, 52 weeks a year. Most museums organize as nonprofits. The reason is that they cannot support themselves without grants and public funds from all kinds of sources. The Dollhouse Museum is remarkable in that it is a self-supporting private museum. Although I hold two master's degrees and could earn a salary at a job, I have worked at the museum full-time for 12 years as a volunteer. It is also the case that my husband and I renovated and landscaped two acres of downtrodden space on Sixth Street, one of the poorest sections of the city. The property is currently worth half of what we have in it. To bring us back to the punchline, for 12 years, we have sponsored in Danville an unusual and appealing tourist attraction, and we don't ask much in return. At this time, we are asking the commission to grant us inclusion somewhere on one sign at the south end of town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Mount?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the commission. I have before you...
If you want to use your microphone, a little closer.
Okay. I have, am I being heard?
You are.
Okay, yeah. This is something we can go through very quickly. It's some conclusions or some impressions I've drawn from looking at the schedule of signs as they appear in the maps that have been developed. And I want to lift up one item here that I don't want to spend time on, namely the issue of Admiral Stadium signs and Boyle County High School signs. You could argue that we don't need any signs about that, those, but if you're going to have them, I think it's important to look at the disparities. If you look under the Sector One locations, you see there are no signs for either Admiral Stadium or Boyle County in the north-northeast entry points. And if you look at the west and southwest entry points, you have two signs for Boyle County, none for Admiral Stadium, and then in the third category, two Admiral Stadium signs and no Boyle County signs. So, and then the two, in the Sector Two locations, you see two Admiral Stadium signs and no Boyle County High School signs. So, that's a separate issue. You may want to talk about it at some time when you're trying to refine the plan. My main thing here is to look at what's going on with the Wilderness Trace, I mean Wilderness Trail Distillery, the Pioneer Playhouse, and the Great American Dollhouse Museum. And my point is that in each case, except for the Dollhouse Museum, you have the signage for one of these entities concentrated in one of these areas, but still, there is at least one sign in the other two areas. So, let's just read down this very quickly, and you can ask me questions if you wish. So, if you look at the first, the north-northeast entry points, one sign for Wilderness Trail Distillery, and there, of course, their big number is in the second section, six signs for Wilderness Trail Distillery, but still, you have one in this first section. One sign for Pioneer Playhouse. Pioneer Playhouse gets four signs down in number three, south and southeast entry points. Then, on, it says, three signs for the Great American Dollhouse Museum. This is the place where they have their signs, and you might argue about the location of one of those, whether it would be better further out in the same line, but anyway, there it is. So, in the second section, six signs for Wilderness, one sign for Pioneer, no signs for the Great American Dollhouse Museum. Then, in the third one, one Wilderness Trail Distillery sign, four Pioneer Playhouse, and no Great American Dollhouse Museum signs. So, you see where I'm going. I'm not trying to argue that everybody should have six signs, or four, or three. I'm just saying that in the other two cases, there is at least one sign in the other two areas, other than where their signs are concentrated. And it seems to me that a good argument can be made that there should be at least one Dollhouse Museum sign in at least one of those other two areas, if not both.
Thank you, sir.
Do you, is this understandable? Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? I gave him three and a half minutes, Nick, so I'm taking 30 seconds off of you.
Sounds good. I'll be short. Nick Wade, with the Heart of Danville. I would like to encourage you all to consider placing a wayfinding sign for the Dollhouse Museum on the south side of town near Walmart. Lori and the Great American Dollhouse Museum deserves a sign, not just because of her appeal as a unique attraction for our community, but also because of her impact on the local economy. The Great American Dollhouse Museum is not only a great local treasure, but brings thousands of visitors a year to Danville. Curator Lori Kagan-Moore is an incredible ambassador for our local businesses. Lori encourages all of her visitors to stay in town to shop and eat at local businesses, creating a direct impact on our local economy. I cannot tell you how many times I've walked into businesses that have told me that because of her recommendations, they have had visitors and have had money. One of them is Jenna Melton. Jenna said that besides Center, Lori Kagan-Moore and her recommendations are the largest impact on her business. So, that's all I have. Nice and sweet.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Earl, did you listen, Nick? Did you hear how fast he spoke?
Okay, all right.
Jeff, if you would, introduce yourself.
I'm Jeff Jewell, the Director of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm also here to speak on behalf of Lori Kagan-Moore and the Dollhouse Museum. Nick pretty much said almost everything I was going to say here tonight. We should have coordinated better, buddy. But I just wanted to let you know that we do see an awful lot of visitors visiting the Dollhouse Museum, occasionally one even stops by the chamber to get directions, because they just do that sometime, and I really enjoy that. And I also have to say that amongst talking to my members about various attractions that do send them business, I keep hearing about Lori and the Dollhouse Museum. They sell a lot of lunches for a lot of downtown places, and people really, really appreciate all the referrals, and it is just a really fascinating attraction. I have to say, when I was being recruited to come to Danville, Myrna Miller took me there, and I thought, Dollhouse Museum? That doesn't sound like something I'd be interested in. And I left just wowed, and I still routinely send people there and take people there, because it gives them such a neat picture of something very, very special our community has to offer. So, I hope you'll consider her signage. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right along. Item one, commission, you have before you the minutes of the previous two meetings, August the 9th and August 13th. Chair will accept a motion to approve both, or separately, however you wish.
I'd like to go separately, because I have a comment on one of them, so I'd move that we approve the minutes from the August 9th, 2018 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sears, second by Commissioner Cottle. We're in discussion. You said you had a comment about?
Probably the next one.
About the next one, sorry. Okay. No further comments, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. The motion for the next?
Sure, I'll move that we accept the minutes of August 13, 2018.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Sears, second by Commissioner Cottle. We're in discussion.
Yeah, I just, I may need some correction here, but we had a banner request, and we usually vote on that. It was an added agenda item at 1A. I don't see that that was recorded. Maybe I'm mistaken, and that did not happen, but I'm looking for some clarification on that.
We did.
Okay, all right. So, if we can make amendment to these minutes that we did have a motion and a second and voted on it, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
You heard the gentleman's...
What was the banner request?
Relay for Life.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was Relay for Life. It was an added, added to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting appropriately, and everything went well. I think that we just forgot to say that we actually acted on it.
Any further additions or corrections? With that addition, sir, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item two is the Urban Renewal Board Appointment Recommendations that I have presented to you, and would ask that you consider making that a motion.
I'll move for the recommended, recommended appointment of Mr. James Rankin to the Urban Renewal Board, as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Is your second?
Second.
Commissioner Cottle with the second. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Item three is the First Reading of Ordinance Number 1919. This is for the tax rates for fiscal year 18 and 19. Mr. Scott?
Very briefly, for your information and the information of the public, cities are required to enact a property tax rate change annually. In fact, all local governments are. You're, as a minimum, required to enact a tax rate called the compensating tax rate, which generates revenue approximately equal to that generated in the preceding year, except for new property growth and personal property. You might recall our discussions of the budget back in the spring, and in that budget document, we did not contemplate increasing property taxes this year, and so accordingly, I would recommend the City Commission enact the minimum tax required by law, and in effect, not take a tax increase on property, and that would be to enact the compensating rate.
Do I hear a motion from the commission?
That rate, excuse me, that rate is specified, and maybe you should mention that, or I should mention that the new compensating tax rate...
Point 143.
One, is point 143, and for personal property, point 184.
That's down from last year, which was a point 144.
Good memory.
Is that a motion, Commissioner Cottle?
I will make a motion to approve the First Reading of Ordinance Number 1919.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cottle, second by Commissioner Terry.
Mayor, since we read those rates in there, we need to say that's per $100 of assessed property rates.
Sure.
Okay.
Okey-dokey.
Yep.
Since that was read in.
All right.
Is the point 184 indicating no change as well?
The tangible property rate is figured after you figure the personal property, their real property rate, and the tangible property had dropped, as you can see, very much since the year before, so in order to get the same amount of income that we're required to get, it had to be raised.
Okay, so it's, it's up.
It's, it's, yes. But it's because the tangible property had decreased significantly since the year before.
Do we need a roll call on this?
Yes.
Please do.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Item four is the report from our city manager, Mr. Scott.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, just very briefly, I have two or three items to mention. As you know, and I think our public knows, that the Heart of Danville has filed an appeal with City Commission requesting review of the recent decision of the Architectural Heritage Board decision to deny issuing a certificate of appropriateness for installation of the proposed mural on the side of the building located in the city's historic overlay district. After some discussion with you individually regarding your availability and schedules, I would request that tonight you do agree to meet on Wednesday, September 5th, at 5:30, for the purpose of hearing this requested appeal. That meeting would be here in City Hall.
Do we need a motion, or is that just affirmation?
Just affirmation, without objection. I guess we'll schedule that, and I think most people responded they could be here, although there were a couple of questions in some Commissioners' cases, but I guess...
It's good by me.
I'm good.
Anticipate full participation, okay. That's great. So, we'll, we'll be here Wednesday, September 5th, at 5:30. I also want to advise you that Branstad or Carroll will soon be in their final stages of completing the Master Park Study Report. We anticipate that with certainty being on the September 24th meeting agenda of the City Commission, so we can look forward to that discussion next month. And the third point I raised is that, as you can read in the memo, there are a lot of activities the city is engaged with. Many of those are on the agenda for your approval later tonight. The Main Street, Streetscape Bit Award, the Second Street Bridge Replacement Award. We're completing our improvements to the park out at the water treatment plant, and there's a lot of other activities going on, including a lot of activity that we're pursuing in terms of recruitment of staff for key positions, and so it's a busy time here at City Hall, but I won't get into details unless anyone has any particular questions regarding any of those.
So, we don't have any questions for Mr. Scott?
Sure.
I have one addition to FDU Commissioner Sears. That's fine, you go first.
Okay. We're sorry to see our city clerk moving away, but we're happy for her in her new human resources position. How is that coming in terms of recruitment of the new city clerk? Can you comment at all?
I can comment that we have gone through a review of the job descriptions, and it's mostly on me in terms of not getting advertised before. We're planning to advertise that in the coming weekends, addition of the local paper and through other sources. We, as Ms. Peak has said, we usually advise, or advertise that in a couple of positions, or a couple of times, rather, for that position and others as well. And so, we would anticipate receiving resumes for that position for some four or five weeks following the initial advertisement in the coming weekend edition, as well as posting it internally as well.
Anything else?
I just wanted to make one additional comment to the city manager's report on item one regarding the Heart of Danville's appeal of the Architectural Heritage Board's denial of their certificate of appropriateness for the art mural on Third Street. I wanted to clarify, just both to you and for the benefit of the public, that that hearing scheduled for Wednesday, the 5th, is a de novo hearing, meaning it will be heard afresh. You will not be having a judicial review of the matter, so as to look for any improprieties, but your standard of review is de novo, meaning you're hearing it with fresh ears, with, to make a fresh decision. And you don't have to uncover some sort of discrepancy in due process, or anything of that nature, a higher level of standard of review. It's just a new hearing. So, there are two ways in which that can be conducted, and I just want to make clear my recommendation of how we proceed. The first of which would be to do a thorough review of the prior proceedings that took place at the Architectural Heritage Board. That would mean either a review of the minutes, or a review of the audiovisual of those meetings for which the matter was discussed. After that type of review, you could either affirm the decision of the Architectural Heritage Board, or reverse it, based upon the findings of fact that they developed, or you could come up with your new findings of fact to support whatever decision you made based on the underlying proceedings. That would be method number one. Method number two would in fact, just to have a new, be to have a new hearing altogether, meaning the parties could present their case to you, not talk about impropriety of process that may or may not have occurred in the underlying hearings, but just have a new hearing. Have the presentation be made by the Heart of Danville to you afresh, and then if any staff or members of the Architectural Heritage Board wish to speak on that matter, then they could present their side of it and the basis for their decision as well. Then, after hearing that testimony, you in fact could make your decision based on the results of that new hearing, without reviewing the underlying matters that took place at the Architectural Heritage Board's previous meetings. That in fact would be my recommendation, that you hear it afresh with a new hearing, without a review of prior meetings and minutes of the Architectural Heritage Board. That in fact was the manner in which our last appeal was conducted, which involved the Von Linger Filling Station on the corner of Main and Fifth, as well as an apartment building on that, on Fifth Street as well. So, I just wanted to make it clear to you, you do have a choice. I think that the most efficient manner to hear, hear the appeal, and also the fairest way to hear it afresh, is to conduct the hearing on your own, and to make the decision based upon the merits that are presented to you in that public hearing on September 5th. I'm happy to answer questions about that process, but I did want to make that clear, you do have, have a choice. It will affect how we prepare for that meeting. So, I guess, I don't know that we need to take a vote, but we probably should in fact have some, you're free to take a vote if you'd like, but we need some type of affirmation that you concur with my recommendation to have a, have a fresh hearing on the matter, without a review of the underlying AHB meetings.
The fresh hearing would allow for input, comments, and suggestions from the public?
It will. It would be up to you if you want to hear that. That would not be a requirement, but you would, it would certainly be within your purview if you wanted to allow it on some limited basis.
Well, I would definitely want to allow to hear the public if we're going to do the hearing, I'd want to hear the public, which means a longer meeting, but I think it'd be worth our time to hear the public.
What, you prefer the, the second route? For what particular reason?
Well, we can sit here and we can watch the video of what occurred, but my, my inclination is that you will have questions, and that you will want to have a dialogue on the matter. If you just, if you just simply wish to review what transpired previously, and then make your decision without having public testimony and public comment, then you would adopt the first manner. But, to the contrary, if you wish to have dialogue with the applicant, members of the AHB, or the public, you would choose the second route.
So, we can't do both?
So, we can't do both? Well, and here's where I am, okay? I was at the meeting.
Well, to me.
So, I already know all this stuff.
Well, and that's okay. I mean, we're not asking you to unlearn what you know. To the contrary, I would say that would form some maybe notion of how you may feel about the issue. However, to me, I think you can be bogged down perhaps in whatever process was used properly, or may not have been proper, in a prior hearing, that to me has no relevance in your decision. That is what guides my recommendation, because of whether the process employed was perfect or not, is not of relevance to your decision. What you're asked to do is not to review their process as a judicial review would have, or as the Circuit Court appeal would have, but rather to hear the appeal on its merits anew. And that means looking at what the proposed mural is, looking at its location, reviewing the design guidelines as stated, and then making a new, fresh decision based upon the applications of those standards to the request. So, really what transpired at the AHB, in my opinion, is irrelevant for the basis of this appeal. You have to determine anew what is appropriate, and if the certificate of appropriateness should in fact be awarded or denied, based on the guidelines, not on any impropriety of process that may have occurred at an underlying proceeding. Do you understand the nuance?
Yes.
Yeah, but I was kind of going to go the route of focusing on the process.
I understand your desire to do that, but to me, that is a divergent path, and will lead you astray from making the best determination, because we're not going to review process at the hearing. What we're going to review is, does the mural meet the guidelines, or does it not meet the guidelines, irrespective of what the Architectural Heritage Board decided? That's the question. So, it's my job to narrow the question to a nugget for you to determine. And to me, what I'm saying, if we review process, it has no application to the essential question, and it will be a lengthy process that frankly is more appropriate in a judicial setting than in an administrative one such as this body. If testimony is going to be garnered at the hearing of what the AHB did right or wrong, I am going to suggest that we not hear testimony down that line, but rather we focus on whether the applicant made an appropriate request, and it should be accepted or not, based upon the guidelines. That's what you're asked to do. You're not asked to review the process that was employed.
I'm in favor of number two, and if we go that route, I would suggest that we also limit how many people take the microphone, so this doesn't become an all-night affair.
So noted. I have a plan.
You have a plan.
I have a plan.
I would request that our questions and comments be first. Also, go ahead.
No, go ahead, no. Ladies first?
Well, I forgot my question. Let me think about it for a second.
I was just thinking about process, because it's going to be lifting. We're going to have hopefully, public input, and I would suggest that we have two signing sheets, those who want to speak in favor of the proposal, those who want to speak against the proposal, and we not listen to everybody on one sheet, but take alternating turns and bring some civility to the discussion. And I like Mr. Dexter's suggestion about we direct the discussion to a new process, that it's a new application, and our decision is, is it appropriate for to go up in Danville?
That's correct. I think that is the basis of your decision, and I would envision the agenda to look something like this. The Heart of Danville would make their case, they would be, they're the appellate in the situation, they would make their case, they would present to you why they think it's appropriate, and after that is done, then anyone from the AHB could in fact counter that and make points as to why they think their decision was appropriate, at which time the Heart of Danville would then have some sort of time for rebuttal, and could make some clarifications or things of that nature. At that time, the case is concluded by the applicant and the AHB, and then you could allow some public comment after each side has made their respective cases, close that, limit it to some duration of time perhaps, and then deliberate.
Is there a way we can maybe have the AHB board members over in your area, so that they're not lumped in with public comment? Is that possible?
No, I don't think that is possible, because in this instance, my representation to you as the Board of Commissioners will be to ensure the efficiency of the process and to guide you through what a fair, due process hearing would entail. It wouldn't be appropriate for members of AHB to gain some position essentially by, I mean, I think the mechanics are important, and they should speak from the podium just as the applicant speaks from the podium, because the weight of their decision, really, in this type of appeal garners no type of deference on your part.
Got it?
I'm sure you will guide us. On the day of.
I'll do my best. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt on that, but I thought it was, for the sake of clarity, it was important both for you and the public.
Thank you.
That was good.
Thank you, sir. If there's nothing else, Mr. Scott, we'll move right on to hear the public, the section that I promised you, where you are invited to take the microphone for up to three minutes to address any topic that has not been previously addressed, or has not been on tonight's agenda thus far. Yes, sir?
Steve Kline, I was up here a couple of weeks ago, and I was speaking about a few potholes and missing street signs. Y'all done an excellent job getting the potholes and the street signs taken care of. Hostclaw Street is still missing one, though. The only other thing I've got, and I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this question, on this proposed minimal tax increase, does that have any effect on the proposed tax increase that the Danville City School System is proposing? So, it's two different things. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, would you clarify what this public comment section is about, please?
This public comment section right here is about any items that have not been either discussed earlier, or have not been on the agenda. So, it is a bit of an open forum.
Can I be able to make a comment about the previous discussion? Dexter, just engage one?
I think that's appropriate.
Steve Knight, citizen. Just wanted to comment, with all due respect to Mr. Dexter's comments, I think the whole purpose of having the Architectural Heritage Board is because they're supposed to be experts in this particular discussion that we're having, and I think that their decision should include extra amount of weight than just starting over from scratch, because if you go in a judicial process, as he is referring to, typically an appeals court is going to look at the decision of the lower court before them with a certain amount of extra weight, and it's up to the appellate to come up with a very valid, heavily weighted decision to overturn that original decision in the lower courts. I think the Heritage Board does demand and require extra amount of weight, because their decision has been made, that precedent is set, and I think that you all should consider what they have already done more heavily than starting over from scratch.
So noted. Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Mayor, I would like to clarify one thing, too. I know we typically don't comment on public comment, but due to the public interest in this, I think I may. When I say the decision of the Architectural Heritage Board should be given no deference, I mean that not from a personal standpoint. That is in fact, a term of art for a de novo hearing. So, I didn't mean that in an implicitly negative manner. A de novo hearing, by its very nature, means that the lower opinion shall be given no deference. That's how it's defined in legal terms. So, that's a term of art. It's not a term of, with any sort of derogatory intention or malice, certainly on my part. And Mr. Knight is absolutely correct, that at the judicial phase, your decision, if appealed to Circuit Court, will be given deference by law, because then the burden changes. At every stage of an appeal, the standard of review is critical. Yours is de novo. If your decision is appealed to the Circuit Court, it changes to abusive discretion if it was clearly erroneous, or there was some clear misapplication of law. Those are much higher standards, none of which apply to you in this hearing. So, I just wanted to, by law, de novo, refresh the legal definition of that again, as we, I use those as a term of art without any other intention, but just to teach what the definition is.
Irony of that term of art, as we get ready to discuss art on Thursday, never mind, I won't go there. Anyone else? We're into Commissioners' comments. Madam?
I'll start. So, it's rival week, Commissioner Cottle.
Oh.
For those of you that may not know, Commissioner Cottle and I have a friendly bet between the Danville-Bowell County game every year, and the loser has to wear the other one's shirt to the next meeting.
How many times you worn that in a row?
We're two to one. This is our year. I have a special shirt in the making. It's going to be your shirt.
Thank you.
Also, I think we would be remiss if we did not mention the passing of the great John McCain and his service to this country in many ways. Yeah, that's, I'm sure someone else has something to say about that. And Representative Elliott, who is sneaking out the door, just wanted to mention that he's here.
Thanks for joining us, Danielle.
That's all.
Anything over here?
I was just going to say, if you weren't at the Heart of Danville, showing of the movie this weekend, the weather was perfect. I don't know who was in charge of that, and I'll take credit for it, but it was a really nice night and a great movie. Saw the Black Panther, I hadn't seen it before, but it was a good time, had a good crowd. I'm glad I went.
Yeah, I'll play off of Commissioner Cottle. Again, on the Heart of Danville, Main Street Live is gaining lots of success. Congratulations, you folks. Thursday night outing in our beautiful Whisger Park is a great experience. Outside of our special call meeting coming up next week, before we meet again regularly, our Kentucky State Barbecue Festival will be coming to town, if you will. And so, I want to remind everybody to get your running shoes out and support the Run for the Arts, and if that doesn't satisfy you, get your chaps out, and we'll get on those bicycles and do the smoking butt bike ride.
And I'd like to follow up on Commissioner Terry's comments, and read a quote, and you probably have already read this, but if you have, I think it's worth hearing it again. And I quote, "Before I leave, I'd like to see our politics begin to return to the purposes and practices that distinguish our history from the history of other nations. I would like to see us recover our sense that we are more alike than different. We are citizens of a republic made by shared ideals forged in a new world to replace the tribal intimities that tormented the old one. Even in times of political turmoil such as these, we share that awesome heritage and the responsibility to embrace it. Whether we think each other right or wrong in our views on the issues of the day, we owe each other our respect, as long as our character merits respect, and as long as we share for all our differences, for all the ranker's debates that enliven and sometimes demean our politics, a mutual devotion to the ideals our nation was conceived to uphold, that all are created equal, and liberty and equal justice are the natural rights of all. Those rights inhabit the human heart, and from there, though they may be assailed, they can never be wrenched. I want to urge Americans, for as long as I can, to remember that this nation, this shared devotion to human rights, is our truest heritage and our most important loyalty." And first time I read those, it struck me that while that's at a great platitude, one of the beauties that I enjoy up here is that we don't work in a DNR world, we work in a one world called Danville. And it works. It's just a whole lot easier when you don't get caught up in that mess. And maybe somehow the words of Senator McCain will resonate long enough for somebody up in Washington to finally begin to hear that. I don't know, but we can't do anything about that, but we can do everything we need to do right here. And so, I appreciate each of you all for what you do and the way you do it, and keeping the focus on the community. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
I should have gone before the mayor. That's a hard act to follow, but I understand why you read that. But in the sane compassion as the late Senator McCain, on a local level, Citizens Concern for Human Relations is sponsoring its end of summer family celebration. It's a continuation of our year-long Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. It's this coming Sunday, September 2nd, at 5:30 at Pioneer Playhouse, and we invite you and your family to come out and enjoy the afternoon with us. Somebody's going to order great weather for us this Sunday, and we're going to have a Danville High School graduate, Mr. Michael Ross, bring to life some of ML King's words, and then we're going to have a drum circle that will take you back to some of the activities you were involved in during the civil rights movement. So, please come join us at Pioneer Playhouse this Sunday. I have a signing sheet that I brought tonight to the meeting, just the deadline for signing up is tomorrow, so need to get you to sign up tonight if you so desire. The next thing is that we're going to have the Frank X. Walker Literary Festival the middle of September, and we're bringing a play to our community entitled "The Meeting", and it's the play that brings together Martin Luther King Jr. and Malcolm X in a hotel room to have a conversation about pulling their forces together during the civil rights movement. And a lot of you historians know that meeting never took place, because word got out about this meeting, and we think that led, or that up the any for, up the timeline for Malcolm X's assassination. So, this play is going to be presented at Danville High School to all the city and county eighth graders and eleventh graders, and then you have an opportunity to attend that same Thursday night at 7:00 PM at Danville High School. The suggested donation is $5 for adults and $2 for students, so we're sort of giving away this excellent piece of our history. Now, that's the sale. The real drawcard, there was, we have Malcolm X, and we have Martin Luther King, and then we have Malcolm X is bringing his own bodyguard to town for the 9:00 show and the 7:00 show, and the bodyguard is going to be our own Chief of Police, Mr. Tony Gray, is going to be onstage in front of all of our high school students and middle school students, and all the public that shows up that night. So, Chief Gray has already had a rehearsal with the cast, and got some excellent reviews have been sent back to Danville about his first rehearsal, so please join us to both of those activities.
You said the evening?
The evening of September 20th, 7:00, right, Chief? Get there at 6:30, get your seat, but it's going to be at Danville High School, both shows. And we'd like to bring Bowell County Middle and Danville, Dayton Middle School kids and Danville High School and Bowell County kids together at Danville High School's auditorium to watch this show, and these things. These things, our students get to partake of, and there's no expense, no charge for the students for the in-school showings, we sorta. The community's been gracious to help us with covering the cost of these things, and so our kids get to go free. Frank X. Walker's gonna be in attendance at 9 o'clock and at 7 o'clock to introduce the play and then to do a talkback with our students and with our community, so really an exciting day. Hope you all will come out and support us in some of these efforts.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing now, we'll move right to item five, that's the payment of the bills to hear a motion to approve or amend the payment of the bills as presented.
I move to pay them. The August 27th bill lists for $469, $469,111.62 as presented.
Thanks, Commissioner Atkins, is her second.
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Terry. Discussion? Seeing now, in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item six is the first reading of ordinance number 1920. This is in regards to the general obligation bond, series 2018. Michelle, floor's yours.
You have before you the ordinance for 1920, that is for the general obligation bonds, and this is in order to construction of the firehouse that we have been in the process of doing for the past year and for the purchase of the firetruck that we've already had a reimbursement resolution in effect, so we can reimburse ourselves with these funds.
I guess we should have a reading of the ordinance itself?
That's for the second reading.
Okay, you want, do we need to read it again, second reading again?
Just one time. It does, first or second reading, it's fine.
Okay.
So I'll move to approve first reading of ordinance number 1920. Second.
We have most of them. Commissioner Sarah, second by Commissioner Cottle. Discussion?
Do we need to, is that, that's an up to amount?
The $10 million is about what it's gonna end up being with, between the construction, the loan costs, and reimbursing for the firetruck.
And I must say, if you haven't seen the firetruck, it is an impressive piece of equipment.
Well, I was gonna say, aren't you all showcasing that? Mister?
Yes, we are. Friday evening at 6:00 PM, we are having a wet-down push-in at Station 2.
Station 2, this Friday?
This Friday.
At what time?
6:00 PM.
6:00, okay.
You're gonna let us all write it to the football game, right?
Madam Clerk, you wanna do roll call?
Commissioner Terry, yes. Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Mr. Serries?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Item, item seven is the wayfinding approval project. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You have with us tonight Mr. John Carman, and I think he's gonna give us a brief presentation, and then we will have a discussion.
Welcome, Mr. Carman.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the Commission. It's a pleasure and honor to be here. Thank you very much. With reference to the previous comments, let me say that it's always good to have passionate people involved in a project. I think passion creates a great foundation for any good project. Let, let me also say that with all due respect to the Boyle County Rebels, and as proud as I am, I, I hope that some of the observations that were made are not a subtle reference to me being an alumnus at Danville High School. Wayfinding is not about quantity, it's really more about quality. And while much of the discussion has centered around the quantity of signs or at, at different places, I, I would hope that you would direct your attention to the quality of what we are attempting to accomplish with the wayfinding master plan. A, a master plan is, is an exercise to create global ideas and, and not so much an exercise in finality. There will be other opportunities for the Commission, for the staff and administration, and in particular the public, to weigh in on final products. So I would encourage you to think about the global ideas that we have accomplished as a community in, in this wayfinding master plan exercise over the past 10 or so months. We have had five public meetings, and while some of the meetings seem to be very laborious and, and at times painful, I, I think it was really about the process in which we accomplished the, the objectives that we set out when we started the project. And I think, for the most part, the public recognized at the end of the process, while we went through some of these painful and laborious steps, while at times the, the results maybe weren't exactly as everybody wanted, I think, as we think globally, I, I think we did accomplish developing a comprehensive plan with, with very good quality. Tonight, I'd like to just take about five to 10 minutes, I'll go through this quickly, although if you have questions, I'll be glad to stop, and, and talk to you a little bit about how we went through the process over the past few years. Wayfinding is, is more than just signage. It, it helps to create a sense of place, and it's about making, it's all about place-making within a community. And while wayfinding does have messages involved with it, it, it's not really about the individual signs always, while the individual signs do convey messages. Wayfinding today is so much different than it was even five or 10, 15 years ago, where signage was absolutely critical to have because you couldn't always read a map while you're driving. In today's world of GPS, wayfinding takes on a different meaning, and I think that the, the emphasis of the quality of wayfinding is really more important in, in many ways than the actual message, and it conveys a message to the users of our corridors, whether they be vehicular or pedestrian corridors, that this community has a sense of quality and has the dedication to convey a uniform message to the users of our corridors. Wayfinding does create that impression, and it also is a way of continuing a message that Danville in particular has started with the branding exercise that, that you all had actually completed just before we got started. We, we had several goals when we started this project back almost a year ago, and we wanted to develop some criteria for wayfinding based on the input from the various different community workshops and community meetings that we had. We wanted to develop a, what we call a family of signs that had a uniform appearance, uniform graphics, and we wanted to recommend strategic locations based on the community input and, and our observations as the consultant to you. And I've mentioned this term before, enhance or create a, a sense of place with a uniform navigational system incorporating the branding that the community had already gone through. We developed a set of rules and assumptions, and, and at each meeting, we attempted to go back and go through these rules and assumptions. And I think for the most part, while there may be a, a few exceptions or maybe even a few oversights, our recommendations followed these rules and assumptions. And, and you will not, and I'm not gonna go through these in, in great detail, but the rules and assumptions do not balance quantity of signs. It has to do with strategic locations from bringing people in from the outer perimeter of, of the downtown area into the central part of the community. And as we get closer to the central parts of the community or closer to particular destinations, we would become more specific as opposed to generic. Just an example, as we are out on the bypass, or let's just say coming into town from Perryville, we would not necessarily have a sign saying to Ethan McDowell Hospital, but we may have a sign pointing to the downtown. But as you get closer to downtown, maybe there would be several signs at strategic locations that would direct a visitor or user of the corridor to the, to the hospital. We, we looked at the travel, we, we looked at the corridors and we looked at traffic volume to, to help us give emphasis to different destinations. We, we looked at what we called decision points along each corridor to determine where signs may be and to help direct users to a particular destination. We, we presented different styles of signage or wayfinding components and that we had pulled from around the state or around the country, and the community chose a style that we called a more traditional style, which I think was, is an appropriate selection given the nature of the context of the community, the architecture in the community, and even the landscape in the, in the community. Some of those inspirations that we used for that traditional style really had to do with the architecture of the community, and I'm sure you all recognize all of these different places and, and buildings in the community. So we began creating different concepts. This is, these are examples of some of the concepts that we created, and you can see the different styles, whether they be arched, that maybe would reflect some of the windows in the community, or the square with certain finestration or the dentil work. And we presented these at various different communities, the community meetings. We, you can see that we actually had voting on, on the styles, and with regards to that and, and in response to the public comment, we actually created this particular style and design of a, of signs that would be placed around the community, and these were presented to the, at subsequent community meetings. We did create a family of signs of different places and sizes where the, you know, different applications around the community. We actually brought in, Earl kindly brought this in, this is actually the size of the sign that would be located on, on the two on the left. Looks large here, but when you're 100 feet away, it's important, they may not look that large, it's in scale, so it's important that you can read that as you're traveling in the corridor. There was a question asked last week about the number of signs, and I think these total up to about 65 different signs that we feel are the most strategic signs, or this is a quantity of what we feel would be the most strategic signs. And then this just gives you, this is about a five by six sign, good size, but doesn't look as large when you place it. We actually began to get down in the weeds a bit with locations of signs, and I'm not gonna go through these by any means because we would be here quite late, but just an example that how we, we created locations for the signs. We divided the community up into sectors. Sector one was more of the perimeter areas, whereas Sector two was as you became closer into downtown. Most of these sign locations are at strategic decision points. And again, just completing that Sector one as we go around the perimeter of the community. We actually also did a, a study on signs that would be removed. This project actually started by, I think, an admonition from the State Highway Department to the community to, let's try and clean up the clutter of the signs. So while we think a lot of the signs are, number one, compliant and mandatory and useful, we think there is clutter, so we, we actually went through in our master plan recommending the removal of a number of signs. In Sector two, as we get more into the downtown area, at different critical decision points. We actually, and this is just an example, I, I pulled this out for no emphasis other than to show you that we did look at specific intersections on the placement, the general placement of signs relative to that intersection. All of the intersections have been detailed to this extent and are going to be useful as you move forward with the implementation. Let me just add an anecdotal comment that Earl Coffey and I have met with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and short of receiving full approval, we have received some very good compliments that, that the community was going forward with a wayfinding plan in a very organized way, and they were particularly pleased with the community input and, and the number of community meetings that, that we have used. Again, just another illustration of sign removal in the Sector two area. Let me say that in closing, number one, I appreciate this time, hopefully I'm not exceeding my welcome here, but I, I think a master plan, again, is really the first step to create these global ideas and to create a, to create uniformity and to help continue enhancing the sense of place in this great community of Danville. Implementation will not be able to occur immediately. Implementation can occur only after final approval is granted by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. The, the primary corridors in Danville, coming into Danville and around Danville are state highways. So to that end, permits have to be obtained. The purpose of this study was not to obtain permits, but to create the ideas. At such time that you're on the brink of implementation, some of these additional ideas, sign locations, number of signs or indication of, of destinations at different places can be finalized. I would encourage you, as you move forward into that, to, to keep in mind the principles, the goals, the objectives, and the rules that have been set up during this process. I, I think that, that there, there could be additional signs, there could be different destinations indicated on some of the signs that we've already done. It could be that there will be additional destinations that are created. I think somebody last week mentioned that there may be additional distilleries that are coming into town, so, you know, and, and that's a good thing, that, a, a good reason why you might want to change some of the destinations or add signs or, or add, change out some of the locations. I, I think tonight it would be good for the Commission to, to look at this globally, approve the ideas and the concepts of the master plan with the understanding that there is an additional step for implementation and that some of these additional ideas could be incorporated into a final implementation plan. Again, I'm honored to be here, back into Danville, and certainly available for any questions, should there be any.
Any questions for Mr. Carman?
I'd start, John, but appreciate the hard work you've done here, and I think that, given the community input, it looks like we have some nice-looking signs here. I just want to clarify, we're, we're probably faced with voting on accepting your recommendations, but certainly when it comes to the signs at each location, as money becomes available, it sounded to me like it still could come back to us in terms of, in what we heard a lot tonight, putting Dalhous Museum on that sign versus something else? Is that what I, was that what I hear?
Well, there, there's certainly opportunity to, to add to or amend the specifics of the, the master plan based on available funds, based on, I mean, this could very well be a phased plan. This plan, I think, I think I said we ended up with around 65 plus or minus signs. I, I could see that that could be phased. We, we haven't worked on a specific phasing plan, not knowing what funding might be, but as that phasing is implemented, you could make decision, decisions at each But as that phasing is implemented, you could make decisions at each milestone of phasing and implementation to add different destinations or different signs.
And I think that'll be the reality. At the last meeting you had, and there was a handful of us there, that we had budgeted $50,000, but a similar project in Frankfurt was 10 times that, approximately. So I don't, I don't think we're going to see all of our signage go up this year. And certainly, the point you made is that things could change, in terms of some new distilleries, and/or consider all that input tonight, and maybe the Dahlhouse needs a little bit of recognition on the South Side. So that's my point, is that it's going to come to us in pieces. So I want to know that we're going to have that flexibility, that we're just signing off on tonight, that you did a great job, but we can still kind of adjust it as wish, as we wish.
A master plan, whether it's a wayfinding master plan, or a recreational master plan, or a campus master plan, is always subject for discussion, modification, and revisions at the time of implementation. I think whether it's a campus master plan, or a wayfinding master plan, as I mentioned before, a primary emphasis is to create a understanding of what the particular topic is. In this case, what wayfinding is, and how you can go about meeting the larger global objectives of that particular topic. I think with the great input that we got from the community, I think we have accomplished that. And whether there are 12 Dahlhouse signs, or six Admiral Stadium signs, and no Boyle County Campus signs, can still be debated and discussed. And I would be happy to give further justification to the quantity of signs and the locations. I think that that could easily be done at another forum, but...
Mayor, Commissioners, if I may, what, staff uses the master plan as a marching document? So we will take that, if accepted by you all in final form, as our marching orders. And usually, unless extenuating circumstances exist, we don't vary from that as staff very, very much. What we will do precisely is we will take the sign, the document, we will develop estimates of the sign blanks. We will identify the locations for the Transportation Cabinet, we'll take the master plan to them. We will illustrate to them what was approved by you all as the local commission, as the legislative body. And then, if they give tacit approval to that, what we will do then is begin to file encroachment permits, as the budget allows, and begin implementing that. We would expect it to take at, before you would see a sign go up, probably eight to 10 months, probably. Mostly because of the, I don't know, the length of time to get the material here onsite, on hand. Once we get that, we'll start putting those up at the locations identified. And we would expect the first round, which we would consider the bypass, the $50,000 estimate, we would try to solve the bypass with implementation. Again, delays can be caused by both material delivery and also final approval by the Cabinet. Then, so in 18 months, we would go through that first allocation, we would think, and then that would get you into your next budget cycle. And you all can choose how you close the project out, whether it's in that next fiscal year, with a lump sum pot of funds, or if you phase it into another 18-month cycle where it got into two fiscal years. The amendments to the signs would occur as things change. Certainly, businesses can be renamed, or, for example, the Norton Center for the Arts could be renamed to the Stephen Dexter Center for the Arts, or the Kevin Cottle Center for the Arts. But if that's changed, those signs, the signs' locations, if we've interpreted the plan correctly, the sign locations do not change. The, for example, Millennium Park sleeve on that sign there can be removed and replaced by another destination as the request to change that happens. So we will consider the master plan document, our marching orders, we will proceed with that, and implementing that as a final plan, if accepted. And then, again, if extenuating circumstances arise, and the city manager brings it to the commission for alterations, then that would be a request that we make as staff over the course of time. And hopefully, that illustrates a little bit of the implementation process. It's not, it's not in limbo, per se, which is why we captured our memo in the way we did, and we ask you to consider the thoughts of the memo. You have a couple of different options. One, you can do nothing with the presentation today, you can accept the plan as final, would be the opposite of that. And then somewhere in between, you all could direct us to do some edits to it, or otherwise. And certainly, staff is recommended to accept the recommendations of Mr. Carmen in final form. And with the review with the Transportation Cabinet, we don't have identified reason to change the locations, which is critical to our budgeting and our implementation process. Again, those, the signs, in changing them, that doesn't change the sign blank, per se, it changes the sleeve that's on the sign somewhere down the road. So you can certainly do that in year one, year two, or year eight. That's up to you all down the road. But certainly, we would, we don't necessarily have a engineering reason why you would delay, but certainly, we would accept whatever direction you all give us.
Ron, you spoke to Mr. Atkins and I before the meeting, just briefly about this. And could you tell us, everybody else, kind of what you told us, as you see the process, it's similar to what Earl and Brick, I think, are both saying, but...
Well, yes. Mr. Coffey talks about, you know, our signage approval is contingent upon the state approving, that's certainly true. And it's also dependent upon our funding, whether we have exclusive city funding, or we get shared funding from other sources, whatever. But it seems to me, in making a presentation or a request to the state for the approval of the signs, we need to be a bit specific, not only for their purpose in terms of location, but for our purposes in terms of funding, funding the signs. And while Mr. Coffey has said that, you know, any element of the sign could be replaced, it seems to me, we've got the possibility of the City Commission looking over that in a timely way, at the time we make the filing with the state, and saying, we're seeking approval, not only of these locations, but these signs on, at that location, which, again, may change from time to time. And so I sort of, this is maybe a crude comparison, but I sort of view it simplistically. Although the state is involved in approving the signage locations and the overall concept of wayfinding, they appreciate. But it's sort of like, in my simple mind, presenting a list of streets to be paved with our limited fund to the City Commission, and saying, are you in agreement with this? And so periodically, as we implement this, I think we could say, if it's two years or three, at this round, we want these signs, these locations with these names on those signs. And I don't see anything wrong with that process, if it's consistent with, you know, the overall plan.
And saying that, I guess I thought that sort of what we were going to hear tonight was, we have $50,000. Where do we start, and where do we get the best for our money by starting there? I suppose, I guess, that's what I thought we were going to talk about.
Well, I think we're more basic in terms of concept, and approving the plan as a concept, and a way, you know, as a wayfinding, placemaking effort, recognizing that we've got a lot of steps to go through yet, in terms of getting the state to accept the plan, to approve the locations, and for us to talk about the amount of money we're willing to spend at any given time to put the signs up. And we can't do that in one meeting.
Right, but...
I'd also want to know a couple of other things, too. If the plan is approved, and we send it to the Transportation Department, my thought would be that we ask the State Transportation Department to approve the whole plan. He said 65 signs in this plan. I don't think we're going to have the expertise to try to change the location of the signs. I don't think anybody in any meetings have ever tried to change the location of the signs. My biggest discussion is, can the sign have three sleeves, or four sleeves, or just two sleeves? And what's the difference in the cost? Nobody said anything at all about the cost of any, one sign or 50 signs. So we need to know some things about the costs. And I'd like the locations, I think everybody we've heard from through this whole process has been, what needs to be in the sleeves on the signs, and at what locations? And whether the Stephen Dexter Norton Center has five signs around town, or just has one sign around town? I think that's been the biggest discussion. So I, I'd like the concept, I like the look of the signs and the size. How much bigger does a sign have to be to have a four-sleeve on it? Does a three-sleeve or a four-sleeve sign need to have different approval by the state? You know, to me, there's little bitty things that I would like to hear. That doesn't change the concept at all. And if we have $50,000, do we get 10 signs? Or if we had $100,000, can we afford 30 signs, because they're increasing the money? Little bitty things like that, I think, need to be addressed. And we heard about Bowling Green, got 96 signs done for pretty close to $200,000, and they use existing poles, or they brought new poles, and there's several ways to get this done. I guess that's probably past this stage, but that gets down to the details from the staff. I think the community is just concerned about what's going to be on the signs. I didn't realize we had so many different sectors and entry points until I started looking at this proposal. And it's done pretty well. I really appreciate what's been done.
If I may, I don't want to, if I may just make a quick comment, and I may be skimmed over too quickly, but one of our basic rules, and it's really not a rule that we created, it's a federal rule that we have to comply with, is that you're only allowed to have three lines per sign. There may be some special exceptions to that, to possibly add a fourth line, that you would make a special request during permitting to the state. But on state routes, you're required to follow federal guidelines for signage, which are very explicit. And one of those very explicit regulations is three lines under certain...
Like three lines, or three, three destinations?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right.
Right.
I was saying, three lines, wait a minute.
I'm sorry, yes.
It's okay, no, I think I knew, okay. Yeah. So to get the fourth destination requires a different type of permit?
There's a waiver request involved in that. And it's, it's not completely unique that that could happen. I've seen it happen in...
Yeah, there's quite a few of them, Lexington, right?
Those are pretty limited, though, right?
They're limited, I mean, we're not, I don't think you can go into the state and say, we've got 65 lines, we want permission to get four destinations on each. I think you have to take in a specific location with some justification for that. And you're correct, Lexington has done that, Louisville has done that, although Louisville has, in some ways, not always recognized that they should be compliant.
That was diplomatic. It's sharing all that information, that knowledge with us, because those are the kinds of things will drive our decisions.
I think it would be appropriate for the commission to accept the master plan, with the understanding that modifications and revisions could be made at the time of implementation. I'm not trying to craft a motion for you, but that may be a way of...
I would like that.
Somebody want to echo that?
I would like that, but again, Earl needs direction. What he's saying is that what we go with tonight is what he's going to roll with. And I still have a little bit of an issue with, all the comments were made earlier today. If you look at the outside, coming in, the Dahlhouse has three Dahlhouse here, Pioneer Playhouse has six, Perryville Battlefield's seven, and Constitution Square's seven. I think they're all kind of in the same group, and so there's some inequity there.
By how much? By one sign?
All right. I just said three and six. They're 50% less than everybody else, two of them are seven.
I would strongly urge the commission to, and, well, let me back up. I may be, we may be wrong in our recommendations, but I would strongly urge you not to make your decisions based on quantity, but on quality. And have we followed the rules that have been established? I would suggest that we have not, if we only have three of one and six of the other, I think it's because the rules and the recommendations and the overarching principles have been followed. Have we, has there been some oversight? There very well could be.
John, when you talk about rules, tell me more. And criteria?
Criteria, so we set up, and I'm not sure that you all were following these, these were the basic rules and assumptions that we established, really from, I think, maybe the first public meeting we had, and there was some input. There wasn't total agreement with these. But for the most part, I think that these were accepted, and we throughout have responded to these. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't step away from the rules. I'm not saying that these are absolute, these are not regulations that have to be followed by a federal or state criteria. These are just good planning and design principles that seem to work from a global standpoint. If you wanted to put six more Dahlhouse signs somewhere on the South Side, that is certainly your all's option. I could tell you that that may not follow the rules and assumptions that we established. But that, again, these, you're not going to be penalized, or if you did that, you're not going to get disqualified from a grant or something. It's, as a planner, we try and follow good planning criteria. And I think that this is part of that good criteria that we follow. There are certainly exceptions to all of those.
I've been to most of the open forums, John, you've done a good job. I think that number three there, for travelers, past the astral, the alternate direction is not provided beyond that decision point. You did make a mistake there. Because if you're coming from Stanford, it says Pioneer Playhouse, but if you go on a bypass, your sign says Pioneer Playhouse on a second route, so...
Well, and that's primarily because there's two existing signs. I think one is a green and one's a brown. I think the one at, going into town at Stanford Avenue, has been there for a long time, and then the other one was added at Ghost Pike. I stand to be corrected. But again, this is an overarching principle of moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, are you open for a motion?
Yes, sir, please.
Because we're going to beat this horse till he...
Amen.
I just moved that we tabled this until next meeting, give ourselves two more weeks to go over it, and let us continue to receive input from folks. Again, I personally like the concept, I just don't want to rush into it. We're not, yeah.
We have a motion, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There is a second to the motion. We are in discussion.
I just wanted to say, this last line here is what jumped out at me, was focus the majority of signage on inbound traffic towards downtown Danville. And I think what I'm hearing from... And I think what I'm hearing from both citizens and a lot of people, actually, is that having a general sign on the bypass that says downtown is not specific enough, that we need to make sure, especially on inbound traffic and at the major intersection on the south end, that we have specific signs that bring people downtown. So, I think that's what our goal is. And I think what I need to know is, how do we do that with our budget and get the best signage up with the money that we have to spend now and the next year? And we need to start that out by being able to build on it. So, we have to be careful about how specific we are and which areas, because as they come into town, it will get more specific. Did that make sense at all?
And that is, I think that is an accurate assumption that we attempted to follow for the most part.
Okay. So, yes.
Any further comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, go ahead. Mr. Cottle?
I was ready to approve the concept with the caveat that we do place another dollhouse museum sign out on the bypass on the south end, because the way I understand it is we are approving the concept rather than the individual content at this particular time. So, that being the case...
We have that option, but that is not the present motion.
Right. I'm just getting, just telling you what I'm thinking. So, that's kinda where I was. I think the concept is excellent and the content we could work out as we go along and as the money comes in, as you mentioned. So, anyway, I'd get that one.
Feel better?
I feel better.
Good.
I do.
Well, this is a, I don't know how many people have actually seen this, but it's very overwhelming and it's very difficult to look at and visualize. So, I think that's part of what I would like to do, is sort of absorb this and be able to picture in my mind and even drive around and do that. So, I think that's why we're gonna table it.
That's fine with me.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mayor, thank you. And I stand ready to continue supporting your decisions and if you need assistance, I think most people know how to get hooked on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Safe travels.
Mr. Mayor, can we...
No.
Request some monetary figures about some of this stuff?
Oh, I thought you asked for a break. That would be from staff?
Yeah, I assume from staff, yeah.
Okay. Earl?
Yes, sir, we can do that.
Thanks, sir.
Because there's a cost for putting on an existing pole versus putting on a new pole, right?
Well, there's a lot of details involved with putting in roadside hazards, which signs are, okay? And so, you'll end up with quite a few, probably twelve to seventeen encroachment permits on file with the Transportation Cabinet. And they're really gonna tell you exactly how... There's no guarantee that you can mount a sign on a post.
Well, I know that.
Okay? And I just don't wanna give the false impression that that strategy works for every community. It may have worked in a previous community because they could have already had signs at certain locations capable of supporting a new sign, right? And so, there's a little bit of a nuance there that's probably not understood and would caution folks to understand that there is, there are a lot of nuances to putting these in place and getting those approved by the cabinet.
Well, and the ninety-six signs that we were told that were put on existing poles, they may have been, none of them on state roads.
Well, and by them being on an existing pole, the opportunity to get those approved as an encroachment is not as necessary, meaning you're changing a sign out, meaning you don't have to get an encroachment permit for it. That means it's an existing sign. So, you're not getting an encroachment permit, you're getting permission to change a sign. That's significantly different in the state's eyes. And, you know, if you put in a new post, it's going to have, it's got to have the breakaway features and it has to have all these transportation safety improvements to it. And an existing pole may not have that. They can for, you know, there's a lot of nuances to that and I don't wanna get all engineering about it, but just understand that it's not as straightforward as... It's easy to say, "Well, just go fix it." And that's not necessarily how things like this are actually done, right?
I would think also, recommendation from staff that would be appreciated by us, given that we'll probably have to spread the money out over years for this whole project, is what sectors we look at first, inside out or outside in.
Right. And a big piece of the estimating process is we wanna make sure before we have vendors trying to give us pricing, we wanna go forward with some confidence that the style of sign isn't gonna change too much. And otherwise, you get vendors that think that, they get excited about something, then they lose interest. And you don't want to, there's not that many vendors necessarily that can do quality work like you're gonna hope for, and so you don't wanna lose interest with vendors either.
So, moving on. I'd like to remind the commission that in the next five items, just to let you know, we do have calls for an executive session tonight, I believe. So, we might not want to belabor the next five items too much. Just saying. Item eight is Resolution Number 2018-08-27-01. This is in regard to the Rock Salt Bid Award. Mr. Coffee?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We had the bids as presented. Morton Salt was a low bid for eight hundred tons, seventy-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. IBG Magic of Kentucky Anna was seventy-seven thousand six hundred and Detroit Salt Company was eighty thousand four hundred and eighty. That's a, totals up based on eight hundred tons, the actual cost on an annual basis is what we use. We do have the option to go to year two. Morton Salt is, again, low for year two. Staff recommends acceptance of the low bid.
Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval of Resolution 2018-08-27-01.
Thanks, Mr. Cottle. Thank Mr. Terry. Mr. Coffee, salt is up substantially this year per ton. Reason?
It's market-driven. I don't have a good answer on the salt, to be honest with you.
Is this, so this is significantly more than we've paid in the past?
I don't remember off the top of my head exactly what last year's was. I do think it was higher, but that's competitively bid. The prices were all generally together. And so, in the salt market, you know, that's what the price is.
My understanding is about twenty dollars a ton more this year.
Is this an up-to amount? So, if we don't use this much, do we only pay for what we use?
We pay for what we use, yes, ma'am. Right.
Did you taste it? Does it taste okay?
We did not taste it.
Moving right along. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. We're accepting a bid of seventy-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-four, is that correct?
You're, yes, you're accepting Morton Salt as the low bidder?
Correct.
The vendor is what you're picking based on their unit price and their unit price does total that amount? That is not your final cost and so it's gonna be based on how much we actually consume.
Okay. I guess I'm confused, because down here where it says now therefore be it resolved that the low bid of Morton Salt is seventy-seven thousand six hundred.
Right. That's a typo, yeah.
I just wanna make sure we got that right.
Thought you were gonna turn his microphone off.
Okay, so we've got a motion. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, we already seconded.
I already did that. I just want, is that a typo?
I'm being ill-advised by staff.
Yes, Stephen, the unit price you're paying is ninety-two thirty-three per ton. And so, you're, that's what you're accepting, is the unit price, essentially. And so, the, you're gonna pay ninety-two dollars and thirty-three cents for every ton you use this year.
So, the total...
If that helps. So, the total, total, if we use eight hundred tons, would be seventy-three eight sixty-four. The award is based on the total.
Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Resolution, I'm sorry, item nine, Resolution 2018-08-27-02, the South End Fire Station Access Drive Bid Award. Mr. Coffee?
Thank you. The South End Fire Station has rear access doors that didn't, we never constructed the rear access drive at the time, partly because the roadway system wasn't developed when the station was constructed. At this time, at the request of the Fire Department and reflected in your all's budget, we are, we have salt bids and the low bidder is Bluegrass Contracting, ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars to install the concrete system driveway to access the rear roadway. So, you have a frustration.
I move we approve Resolution 2018-08-27-02.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Is there a second? Mr. Cottle, thank you. Are we doing this now because of the fire truck that we're using, the ladder truck out there now?
No, we've always wanted to do that and we're just now really getting to it, given everything else that the Fire Department's been involved in.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? And then I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Resolution 2018-08-27-03, this is the Main Street, Streetscape Bid Award.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We accepted bids on August fourteenth for the Streetscape Project, which is the sidewalks and curb and gutter system from Fourth Street down to Fifth Street, essentially, excepting out a couple of the existing sections, for example, in front of City Hall. The low bid was Bluegrass Contracting, it's six hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. The engineer's estimate by QK four was six hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars. This is partially funded by Streetscape Grant, originally valued at two hundred and fifty thousand, some of which we've spent, I think there's about two hundred and twenty left, after design fees and associated costs have been paid out of that grant. The, we only had one bidder, Bluegrass was the successful contractor up on Third Street and feel like that their competition bowed out to their unit prices on the previous work, which was publicly known.
Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve Resolution 2018-08-27-03.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Discussion?
Is this for the south side of Main Street?
Both sides of Main Street, both the north and south. It replaces the electrical system, including new conduits from the meter distribution panels all the way in both directions. It goes essentially from the curb return, which is your curve at each intersection, to the straight part of the curve at the next intersection.
Okay. What was the budgeted amount we had for this? Just curious.
We have two hundred and twenty left, right?
Yeah.
To apply.
Do you have that?
We had two projects budgeted in the budget cycle and for the total of both projects, we had a million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted. This is a little bit more than what we had budgeted for that one, but we still have it in the budget to do it.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item eleven's Resolution 2018-08-27-04, Water Tower Painting Bid Award. Mr. Coffee?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The first piece that we engage in the renovation of one of the water towers is engaging the contract documents. This consultant prepares those for us, for these fees identified. It is professional services, considered professional services, so we issue an RFP. Part of their work will be the inspection of the tank. Majority of the cost will be the inspection services, which are about, valued at about twelve percent, which ends up being about eighteen thousand dollars. And that includes the climbing and the metal inspection during the painting of the tank. So, they'll remove paint and then reapply new paint and that is aided by a properly certified inspector and that's what these folks are. Staff recommends the acceptance of their work and they will be aiding in the contract documents and also the inspection.
Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval of Resolution 2018-08-27-04.
Thank you, Mr. Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Discussion?
This is inside and outside?
It will be, yes. It will be painting both inside and outside of the tank and repairing some leaks as they're found during paint removal.
Did this, did we not paint this one a few years ago when we painted most all the others or...
No. This one's not been painted since it was constructed in the late nineties. Ninety-six, I think, is the era of this paint.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, chair, call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item twelve is Resolution 2018-08-27-05. This is the South Second Street Bridge Replacement Bid Award. Continue, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The city advertised for the replacement of the Second Street Bridge. The low bidder was Jave LLC. The project was three hundred and sixty thousand. It did compare to the engineer's estimate of two hundred thousand that me and Mr. Byerly developed a couple of different ways. The biggest variance or cause of the variance is just the rating of the bridge. We were looking at a thirty-seven ton structure based on the fire truck, largest fire truck we had being thirty-six tons. The bridge they proposed was forty-five tons and so that's what they are providing. The other thing that's contributed to the cost that we didn't necessarily consider when we were developing our original budget is whether or not we do sidewalk access. So, we tried to include that in the RFP documents to install a sidewalk on the east side of the bridge. If you've been down there, on the west side, there's a wooden bridge about ten foot to the west of the existing structure. That bridge is, you know, fifty, twenty years old, in excess of twenty years old now. So, we had thought that perhaps you could engineer a sidewalk similar to the bi-duct where you would have a traffic lane and sidewalk on the structure. What they proposed was doing a separate structure for the pedestrian access, which would be about ten feet to the east of that bridge, the pedestrian. So, in essence, you would be getting a new bridge plus the renovation of the Second Street Bridge for the money, which does affect the price up. The concrete structure would be somewhere between seventy and eighty thousand. We valued it, based on their comments, at about seventy-five thousand. We discussed it with city manager and with Michelle on the funding for it. The commission can choose to fund that. It does require consideration, but there is money, I guess, we'll let Michelle define that.
The pedestrian bridge, we can also, we can take out of the general fund money and use that we have from there for some park stuff and it won't make our general fund go over budget. Either way, we're gonna have to do a budget amendment for the Second Street Bridge and municipal aid, because we will have to do that. We thought we were gonna start it last year and we'd put it in both years and then plus it's a little bit more. So, we'd have to do about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget amendment that would just come out of the reserves of the general fund, just transfer it over to the municipal aid. Both of them are doable this year if you all choose to do so.
They're gonna take out the, I'm sorry, they're gonna take out the west side wooden bridge?
No, we're gonna leave that in place and we are actually trying to open that up now by the removal of a couple of trees that are overhanging. So, we're trying to open that side up. There'd be butterfly gardens on the west side. And so, we're trying to really enhance both sides in the pedestrian bridge that would be on the east side, if constructed, would enhance trail development on that side and certainly access, improve long-term access to the south side of Clarkson Run.
This is actually helping to connect the trails?
Ultimately, yes. Absolutely.
I think, I believe we need a motion, don't we?
Do you have a discussion?
I'll move that we accept Resolution Number 2018-08-27-05.
Thank you, Mr. Sears, Mr. Atkins. Now, we're in discussion.
What's your timeframe to begin?
They have to, if they have been given a notice of award, they have thirty days to give us engineered plans, which are similar to shop drawings and they'll be stamped... us engineered plans, which are similar to shop drawings, and they'll be stamped by an engineer. And after that, they have 60 days to complete the bridge.
So, it would only be...
Once they start, we would anticipate them working continuously to be done realistically. We've given them 60 days in the contract time once they mobilize. So, once they start work on the structure, and once they mobilize equipment to the site, they are required to be done in 60 days.
So, let me see if I got this correct. The $75,000 for the, for the east side of that bridge, that is separate from this 360,000?
No, sir.
It is included?
It is included. Yes, sir.
Okay, so, really, when we back that out of the 360, trying to compare an apple and an apple...
That is correct.
It's basically 290 versus the estimate of 200.
Correct.
So, the 90,000, you're getting a heavier bridge, but you also indicate that that price is due to the fact that other bridge contractors are busy, and...
Absolutely.
Is that condition likely to change in the foreseeable future?
We don't think so in the timeframe that we would recommend you working on the bridge. The bridge is about 18 months past its inspection, and it needs to be, it's to the point really where you really need to start work on it. But based on the two conversations we had with different contractors besides this bidder, it's the climate, the state has really hit the small bridges, apparently, and those guys recommended that, they didn't feel like the price was that bad from their perspective. Now, certainly, paying for it is a different perspective, but certainly 295 is not that far, or 290 is not that far out of the realm, considering you're getting a higher-rated structure that is another tier rating above the 37-ton, that's the next level up. And also, you're getting a wider bridge that will accommodate the cleaning up. If you've been down there, the roadway, as you approach the structure, narrows. And so, you're going to increase that slightly, which is, that's a big help, too. So, you're getting wider and a heavier-duty structure also.
I was just concerned about that bridge, that street being closed with school bus routes and things like that. Have you addressed that with them? Or are they going over it now?
There is school buses that go over it now, and we'll have to talk with the schools and work out alternative routes. Yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, chair, call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 13 is the first reading of Ordinance Number 1921. This is for the fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget amendment. Ms. Gossar?
As we just now discussed, with you passing that ordinance, then we, or that resolution to, for the bridge, we will now need to amend our ordinance for the municipal aid fund only, and that will be amended by $150,000 adding to it in order to pay for the bridge. And again, the walking pedestrian bridge will be taken out of the general fund. This will be, the transfer will be subsidized by a transfer from the general fund over to the municipal aid fund to account for this.
Could you repeat all it, please?
Yes, I can, if you would like.
Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval of Ordinance 1921.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
We have an item here under legal number 14. Do we need to address that now?
Yes, briefly.
Please?
Anytime there is a change to the Open Meetings Act or Open Records Law, the Attorney General is required to submit that documentation to county judges, mayors, city attorneys, so it can be disseminated to you. And today, we are complying with that request. It's an updated version of your duty under the law, and we will have to sign a certification that has been delivered to you and explained. There were three changes. I won't explain them in detail, great detail, but minor, minor ways is this. The first is that now meetings can be conducted by teleconference, and there are certain rules associated with how to do that. That's all outlined in the law. There's also some rule changes that pertain to selection committees. And last, from the Open Records Act, it excludes records that are purely personal in nature from being subject to disclosure, despite being on maybe your email account that is associated with the city. So, those are the, those are the highlights of the three changes. We can go into detail if you wish. Otherwise, we will provide you with the updated document and ask that you sign a receipt for it, and then we will file the appropriate certification with the Attorney General's office.
Okay? And it's been indicated we do have need for an executive session tonight?
Yes, sir, we need to have an executive session for the purpose of discussing property acquisition.
Do I hear a motion to that effect? Don't let anybody jump in the water.
Hang on a minute.
Can we limit it to five minutes?
I move that we move into executive session regarding potential real estate acquisition for which publicity at the present stage might or would likely affect the value per KRS 6181B.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle.
You're welcome. I'll sing it next time.
Commissioner Terry, for your second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Mayor, I'd also just like the record reflect, due to birth of my third child and in-laws at town, I'm going to skip out on executive session tonight and wish you nothing but the best. So, have fun.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion that we move back into regular session?
So moved.
Oh, second.
Dynamic duo for real. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All in favor of moving into regular session, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. We're in regular session. Mr. Scott?
We have nothing to report following our executive session.
All right. Like that?
You knew that, didn't you?
I move to adjourn.
Motion's been made. And a second, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.
You may be getting excited.